Madam Mayor, recording has begun. Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Oh, really?
I cannot hear you yet. Yep.
Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Right. Oh, really?
All right. Good evening, everyone. What a great group we have today. And just plan on being here every Tuesday when we have our council meetings. I'd love to call this meeting to order on October 28th, our regular town council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Madam Mayor?
Here.
Councilman Guttenberg?
Here.
Councilman McCormick?
Here.
Councilman Sampson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And I am going to do something that is really unconventional, but my little Daisy, can you come on up here? Come on. Yeah, I'm gonna have you lead with me, lead the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? Come on, Councilman.
She's just as shy as she could be.
So if you all would please stand and join us.
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
There may be other surprises, so hang on. All right, the approval of the meeting agenda. If council has had the opportunity to look at the meeting tonight, I will entertain a motion.
Said motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call? If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye, if not, nay.
Councilman Guttenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor James?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. This is where this doesn't require discussion from the council. And so they look at this, and what they do is if they're in favor, they've, we've all read what has gone on here. And for a consent agenda, we just ask that there's a motion and then a second. And if there's any discussion, we go from there. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, if you are in favor of approving the consent agenda when roll call, please indicate by saying aye, if not, nay.
Councilman Guttenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor James?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. You have the opportunity to speak if you wish. And if you do want to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and just keep your comments to three minutes. That would be appreciated. Anyone out in that great audience want to speak this evening? All right. Now we get to go to the next item on our agenda, which is the oath of office. So you all get to witness something pretty cool tonight. So I'm gonna call down our officers that has been sworn in. And, oh, there he is. All right.
The Chief of Staff, and have you say before we swear in this officer, if you'd like to say a little, some words about officer, you can.
There's a lot to say about Officer Kruger here. Unfortunately, there was no classes at the time when we first hired him. So I think all of us here at the department had a good chance to get to know him as a person and just learn from his experiences that he had. For those that don't know, he was a prior officer in the state of Florida. So he's not some newbie never thrown on the road. He comes with a lot of experience, a lot of good experience. So honestly, we're grateful to have him, and I look forward to getting him on the road. So this is a pretty exciting night for the department, the town, and Ryan. So happy to be a part of it. Thanks for coming aboard.
Why don't you take this issue of turning back eyes? If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will? To the best of my skill and judgment? Diligently and faithfully? Without partiality or prejudice? Execute the duties of police officer of the town of LaPlata? According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. And Officer? Sign here. Now is your opportunity to say a few words. You don't have a choice.
Well, as Chief stated, it's been a long road. I've been here since January. Again, like he said, I had a chance to get to know everybody, and it's been quite exciting. Made some good friends, and I'm looking forward to getting on the road and serving this great town. So thank you.
Thank you. Then we have one more swearing in, our reaffirmation. But this is, this is an exciting time, too. We have our former chief in here that is going to witness the passing of the baton officially here. So it is with my great honor that I get to swear you in as Chief of Police. So please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matthew Norris.
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the duties of Chief of Police for the town of LaPlata?
Execute the duties of Chief of Police for the town of LaPlata?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. Would you please say a few words?
About myself?
Uh huh, there you go.
That should be easy.
First of all, I'd like to thank the town council. Our new town manager, Chuck Stevens, Michelle Miner, everybody else that I work with in the town. I appreciate all the support given to me personally and to the police department. Specifically, I like to thank, or thank former Chief Schinner for his mentoring and all the assistance he still offers and any kind of news updates that can assist me in my job and my role here. I also like to thank my command staff. All of them are here. They're what makes this police department work, and they're the ones that, you know, are assisting our boots on the ground. Our police department doesn't function through me or just through one person, but we're all a big team. And as you can see, the support here, they're all here if they're not on the road right now. So just want to thank you all for being here and supporting me throughout my career here. And I look forward to the future with all of you here. And hopefully, we can keep making a difference and making the police seem even more professional in this day and age. So again, thank you all for being here.
I wasn't gonna point that out, but you know, there you go. All right. Thank you both very much. Next on our agenda is our first proclamation. It's Operation Green Light. And I have Councilman Guttenberg that is going to read that proclamation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the residents of the town of LaPlata have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and maintained the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the town of LaPlata appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and seeks to honor those who have paid the high price of freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, the American Red Cross, religious groups, civil service, and countless other volunteer organizations. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military service to civilian life. And whereas active duty military service members transitioning from military service are at a higher risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And now, therefore, we, the council, the town of the town of LaPlata, do hereby encourage all citizens in the town of LaPlata to join the efforts of Operation Green Light for the period of November 4th through the 11th, 2025, by changing one light bulb in their home or business to a green bulb as a sign of support as military personnel transition back to civilian life upon completion of their service to our country. Signed, the council of the town of LaPlata, Mayor Janine James, Paul Guttenberg, Councilman, Patrick McCormick, Councilman, Gregory Sampson, Councilman, and Tajan Johnson, Councilman.
Thank you very much. And seeing that we are in a county that is heavy with military, this is such an important, not only to me, but to our county and our town. So I encourage you, just go out, get that green light bulb, and put it on from the 4th of November to the 11th of November in recognition of their transition from military life to civilian life. I get to the honor of reading the next proclamation. So coming up on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so you have plenty of time planning, it's Shop Small Saturday. And this downtown lights up with all of the shops really catering to our holiday needs. So Shop Small Saturday, November 29th. Whereas the town of LaPlata celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays low in the local community. And every dollar spent at small businesses create an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees in local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas small businesses across the country recognize the impact of relationships established on Small Business Saturday on holiday retail sales and on throughout the year. And whereas the town of LaPlata actively seeks opportunities to work in partnerships with the community and to promote the social and economic benefits provided by independent, locally owned businesses. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of LaPlata, do hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025 as Shop Small LaPlata in the town of LaPlata, Maryland. And do urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. It is signed by the council of the town of LaPlata, Mayor Janine James, Councilman Guttenberg, Councilman McCormick, Councilman Sampson, and Councilman Johnson. This is so important to our town and to the local economy. And I really urge you, even if you don't have a whole lot of shopping to do on Saturday, come down with all, come down here to downtown with all the festivities and support even if it's just being here. So that is now proclaimed. So I will see you all on that Saturday, because I will be out shopping. My husband will be following me, I am sure. So, all right, next. As we are just in a benevolent mood, Neighborhood Mini Grant Awards. The first one up is Hawthorne Green. Do we have representatives from Hawth-- I see you there. Come on down. You wanna, you can either read it from there and then come on down, either way. Councilman Sampson is going to be presenting this to you. Why don't you read it down there? No habits.
Okay, we're gonna face them. Okay. The Neighborhood Event Mini Grant recipient presented to Liz Jaeger in the amount of $500 for an event in Hawthorne Green this 28th day of October, 2025. An appreciation and recognition of your participation in the town of LaPlata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. Your community spirit is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you did.
Thank you.
Just so everybody can see. Great.
Are you here?
Okay. Is the representative from Quailwood present?
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
All right. Let me try to pronounce your last name right. Dumbald? All right. Neighborhood Event Mini Grant recipient presented to Caroline Dumbald in the amount of $500 for Quailwood this 28th day of October, 2025. An appreciation and recognition of your participation in the town of LaPlata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. Your community spirit is appreciated. Thank you for your event.
And I know both of those communities have such great events that I know you've invited council, and I will be there. I already have it on my calendar, so thank you very much. And thank you for applying for these grants as well. Next up, I'm going to have Councilman Johnson present to the Girl Scout troops. There may be one or two of them down here.
Good evening. I'm TJ, one of the council members. So on behalf of the town, this is a Neighborhood Event Mini Grant recipient presented to Ms. Douglas and Garner for the Girl Scout troop in the amount of $500 for charitable stocking stuffing events. On behalf of the town council, your community spirit is appreciated. So thank you. Thank you. Great job leading the Pledge of Allegiance. You see, we shot. Thank you. May you get the check, right? Who wants to go and just tip your purchase check? There you go.
And I have to say, our Girl Scouts have been so active in the community, whether it's helping out at our concert series or any of the other events that we have had. So it's nice to see the scouts in the community and giving back. So thank you for that. That is what scouting is all about. And you are perfect examples of what to do. And remember, Girl Scout cookies are coming, um, December is when we can start ordering them. And they always come out in February, right? All right, so support, support your Girl Scouts there. All right, next up will be King's Grant. Do we have a representative from King's Grant here? Okay, do we have a representative from Whispering Oaks here? All right, come on down, and then you can read King's Grant afterwards if you want.
Same, gonna read off the award here and say thank you very much for applying. These are, these are awesome events that happen in neighborhood and really bring together community. I know that the person taking the picture over there, we've had a million conversations on how to get more folks to apply. And I'm really glad to see we had five recipients this time. So Neighborhood Event Mini Grant recipient is gonna be presented to you, Dr. Sorenson, in the amount of $500 for Whispering Oaks this 28th day of October, 2025. An appreciation and recognition of all your participation in Town of LaPlata's Neighborhood Events and the Mini Grant Program. Thank you so much and congratulations. Abby, hold this real quick, take a picture, and I'll give you the important check out here.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And before you leave, I have a quick, I have a quick question for you. You held the event already. It was your first one. Can you tell us how it went?
Basically, it was the spring of its first ever and first ever fall block party. We held it in the, we call it the Moss Park because it's a little circular area in Pine Grove Whispering Oaks subdivision. And we had a DJ who was, who was in the community. We had a bounty house. We had some vendors come. We had a cupcake vendor come. We had Dr. Morton, which is the home builder. They brought, they had a table, and they provided food. But we also provided great hot dogs and drinks and chips. And we had games. We had an obstacle course for adults and children. We had bingo, football themed bingo. We had a lot of the community businesses. They donated gift cards and services, and we had over $600 worth of that. So we had raffles. And we had about 250 people in the neighborhood come, I would say. So I thought, we were all thinking it was very, was a very good turnout. And hopefully, it will happen again next year.
Oh, that sounds like it was a wonderful event. Thank you for organizing that.
Yeah, you go ahead.
And then the last, but certainly not least, unfortunately, there's no recipient here. That's okay. They're very busy doing neighborhood events right now as we speak, I'm sure, is King's Grant and Ms. Shaw. So a Neighborhood Event Mini Grant recipient is gonna be presented to Ms. Shannon Shaw in the amount of $500 for an event in King's Grant this 28th day of October, 2025. An appreciation and recognition for all that she does in her participation in Town of LaPlata's Neighborhood Events and the Mini Grant Program. So thank you very much, Ms. Shaw, and we'll, you know, ensure that we get this to you. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. That's, that was, now we're gonna get down to some business. We've got Jamie Kendrick here, who is going to give us a presentation.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, M.D. that M, they're online. I was going, I was on a roll, too. They're online, that they're going to do a presentation about what's going on on Charles Street, and then Jamie's gonna come down. All right. You got a little bit more time to rest there, Jamie. So, Mr. Stevens, I'll throw it to you so you can set us up for this.
Okay, all right. I think you hit it already, Mayor. We've got, the State Highway Administration is going to be here. I believe Sean should be online, and if we can get that presentation pulled up, they are going to brief council this evening on the Maryland 6 Charles Street redesign. This is an informational presentation for you only this evening. There's no decision space for town council tonight. There may be at a point in the future, but tonight, I would say, sit back, relax, enjoy the presentation, soak it all in. It's, it's, it's gonna be very, very informative, I think, for you and the community. And so I see the presentation, and Sean, are you there?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Yep, thank you. My name is Sean Boyle. Thank you for having us tonight. I work for the State Highway Administration. Also, some colleagues of mine that are here is Kim Tran. She's more local. She's out of District 3. And Lindsey Bobian, who's also from my office. So, yeah, as Chuck stated, thank you for having us again one more time tonight. And we're here to present a little bit about the project that we have in design with my division. And just giving you some updates and some look aheads, and we'll just get right into it. So this is the Maryland 6 Charles Street Community Safety and Enhancement Project. And a little bit of the agenda of this PowerPoint. This is kind of a quick snapshot. We can go into as many details as you'd like. I think we'll have some time for some Q and A. So the agenda for this, we'll do a little quick introductions from my side. I have a display to share with everybody, the project schedule, some upcoming agreements or memorandums of understanding, or also known as MOUs, that I'd like to bring up so that the town council can be aware of them as part of this project and some open discussion. So one more time, I'm Sean Boyle. I am the project manager for the project. And my boss, Lindsey Bobian. Lindsey, I'm not sure if you're able to unmute yourself yet.
Well, it looks like I can. Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsey Bobian. I'm the project management discipline lead for the Highway Design Division, working with Sean on this project.
And we also have Kim, who joined the call. Kim, I'm not sure if you're able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kimberly Tran. I'm the district engineer for District 5 here at the State Highway Administration. So my area of responsibility is Charles County, along with Anna Rundle, Calvert, and St. Mary's.
Thanks, Kim. So just some quick project overview. We are looking at doing some geometric modifications to the slip ramps at US 301. Providing multiple medians to serve emergency vehicles. Have six-foot wide sidewalks throughout the corridor, a 10-foot shared use path. High-visibility crosswalk striping, which includes the Willow Lane intersection. We are proposing two roundabouts. One is a dog bone or a peanut-style roundabout, and the other one is a mini roundabout located at Oak Avenue. We'll be doing some landscaping. We are looking at potentially including two plaza areas, pedestrian lighting, and waterline replacement included in this project. Here's a quick snapshot of the project display, and I can pull this back up at the end of the presentation if we want to zoom into some areas. But this kind of just highlights the overview that we just went through. And I'll come back to this at the end of the presentation for questions or comments comments, or if anyone's curious about certain locations. So project schedule, we started this project in August of 2023. And June of 2025, we reached our 65% design completion. We're currently approaching our 90% design completion. We expect to have that in December of this year. We'll move into our 100% plans by November of 2026 with issuing notice to proceed to the contractor in the April of 2027. That being said, some MOUs, memorandums of understandings that I'm going to discuss a little bit with the town would be these plaza areas, pedestrian lighting, the waterline replacement, and the connecting street between Graves and Oak Avenue located behind the a little bit, those small businesses on eastbound Maryland six. So the first one, the first plaza area, it would be located in front of the businesses between Graves and Oak Avenue. The whole idea is to build upon this main street feel, this, you know, like center of the community, bringing in some more characteristics that would invite people to walk more, to ride their bicycles. I know there's a couple of developments happening around. So this sort of provides like a nice space for people to maybe go to the ice cream shop and even building upon the, hopefully that small business weekend that was talked about a little bit earlier. So looking at doing some things here that would, you know, just promote the pedestrian feel and kind of give it a main street feel. The second area will be located in front of Port Tobacco's, Port Tobacco Players Theater. Right now, the rendering is very conceptual. It is also including the neighboring business to Port Tobacco Theaters, which is the E-med supply. But we were able to actually speak to the Port Tobacco Players Theater representative. He seemed very enthusiastic about it. He really saw the vision here about basically turning La Plata into a nice main street public gathering location. And these are just some examples of, you know, these sort of plaza areas that have been developed that we could borrow some of the concepts and apply them here. So with this MOU, we would be looking at having La Plata own and maintain the plaza areas and for S H A to do the construction on them. The next one would be pedestrian lighting. We do have some pedestrian lighting general guidance that I stole some of the verbiage from to include in this slide. So with this project, we'd also have the opportunity to provide some lighting along Maryland six for pedestrians. Again, La Plata would be the owner. They would maintain the lights. Financially, there'd be some financial contribution there as well. And S H A would construct it as part of the contract. The waterline replacement, this one came up pretty recently. We are actively working with Michelle and Chuck to kind of get through some of the details with this one. And Chuck, you can chime in if I'm wrong, but there is some sort of mandate that the waterline, if you can't identify the material that it needs to be replaced within a certain timeframe. And this seems like a very good opportunity for us to kind of consolidate both projects into one to create less impact on the community with the construction. So Chuck, not sure if I got that 100% right.
I think you got it exactly right. Council, we just want to do one dig. So this, what he's referring to with the waterline replacement is the, the lead pipe line replacement program that we have to do. That's a federal mandate. And so we know that there's water lines under Maryland six Charles Street, and the last thing anybody wants to do is come in behind this beautiful new, newly reconstructed road and asphalt and then dig it up because we didn't think ahead to replace the lines. So Sean's right. We just introduced this not even a month ago when the state was down here in this room talking with the community. And we said, hey, if we're going to dig, let's do it one time and let's make this a part of this project. So I think it's the right thing. Everyone seems to agree with me on this one. So we're going to roll with it.
Yep. And, you know, kind of behind the scenes, Chuck and Michelle, they've been very helpful. We're, we're working on getting it incorporated as quickly as we can. Kind of with that, some of the conversations that we had is that La Plata is going to be responsible for doing the design for the waterline. Also, ultimately will own and maintain it and S H A will construct it per the plan. And we will be looking at doing some cost sharings as well with that. That would be worked through the agreements team and La Plata. So I don't really have too much information there. And one of these last things is that we'd be looking at improving this connecting street that's located behind the ice cream, the bakery shops. Just because we'd be looking at changing the access on Graves Avenue and also the community that's located just south of this picture. Graves Avenue would kind of be, we'd be looking at having traffic head south along Graves. While also the community would probably be trying to drive north on Graves. So improving that connecting road would, you know, just, just benefit the overall circulation there. So yep, I kind of summarized the slide. So S H A would construct it and we would turn it over to La Plata for maintenance and ownership. Also here, I do have a link to the project portal page. If anyone's interested in just keeping up to date with it, we do update this on a semi monthly basis. Whenever we have something important to share, we will put it up there. But at this time, I think we're, I know that was kind of a quick snapshot of what's going on. So I have the display here and I think we can open it up for some questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Sean and Lindsay and shout out to Kim. I missed you at the CTP, but you were, your, your stand-in was wonderful as well. And I always, anytime I can thank you, I do want to publicly thank you all for putting in the flashing beacons, crosswalks there on Route Six. It's still a learning curve and I saw that this weekend. You know, people are still trying to cross without hitting that button, but it's, it's getting there. So thank you. And before I open it up to my colleagues here, I just want to say also, thank you for holding the charrettes and, and making sure that our public has a say in what's going on and the stakeholders. It is so comforting to see that you reached out to Port Tobacco Players and with a vision. I love what I see. I love the, the plaza concept and that is definitely a traffic calming method that can be implemented that really enhances the beauty of our downtown. So with that, I'm going to see if my colleagues, I'm going to start with Councilman Gutenberg, if you have any comments or questions for Sean, Lindsay, or Kim.
First, thank you so much for, for coming and making this presentation to us and, and all the previous presentations that we get a lot of questions about this. I know when, when I'm out, folks ask about it. A question I might ask of you is just, you know, there's a lot of people that work in the courthouse complex and at the, the county office buildings that use Washington Avenue entrance onto, onto Charles Street. And I, I think when we get close to the time the project is going to be starting, how will communication about how those intersections are going to work during the period of time that construction is underway? I mean, we don't have to have that answer tonight, but like, when, when will those kind of like more detailed communications for, for people who work downtown be coming?
Yeah, good question. I know typically before we go out to construction, we will host a pre-construction meeting in the town. So we'd probably be looking at using the space that you're in currently to host that meeting where we can kind of go over some more of the details that we'll have planned for the construction and just overall phasing. And like what to expect throughout the construction phase.
Okay. Is that like, you know, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days out kind of timeline from, from when construction would start?
Lindsay, I might have you answer that one.
So we usually would go out a couple of months or so before we start construction to kind of let you know what to expect. But then also Kim's staff would be working, they're going to be the ones that are going to be out there every day. And so we have a district community liaison who would be kind of coordinating with the businesses in the area. So they usually do a couple of weeks, or if we think that maybe we need it more like months in advance or whatever, they're going to keep you informed of what's going on. Like, okay, we're going to be working in these blocks this time. We're, we're going to be moving on to this block at this time and kind of let you know what to expect during construction.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. And especially to let the fire department EMS and the hospital know as well, because there will be some construction there, just so that's a safety reason. Councilman McCormick.
Yes, thank you. So I appreciate the day to day and kind of 30, 60, 90 day vision that's been lined out here. I want to talk a little bit in the future here. So it sounds like you've done a lot of community engagement and reaching out to folks that'll be directly impacted because their business is either on this road. Obviously, the mayor just brought up with, you know, actual first responders haven't utilized that road during construction period. But let's go five, 10 years down the road. Okay. So this has been built. You have done other projects like this. What have you found from the communities five to 10 years after its implementation? Are you finding that communities are happy with these type of designs? Are you finding areas of opportunity that we can improve on? What's that feedback mechanism look like? I see that we have a project portal, but what does it look like in five to 10 years when there's potentially a new council and folks that have to respond to either the goodness that came from this or the opportunities that came from this project?
Again, that's, that's also a very good question. I know we do have, like Lindsay mentioned, there is a public relations or a community relations member that's located in the district that a lot of those questions can get funneled to, and they can either address it there or they'll escalate it to us to have some more input or bring that back. But I think in general, we probably do have opportunities where I, to be honest, this project is pretty unique. This is definitely the first community safety enhancement project that I've done. But it's, it's one of the more unique projects in Maryland at the moment, I would say. So I also would encourage a lot of feedback for this. There aren't a lot of corridors that have this current design or a design quite like it. Maryland six is very unique in its overall geometry and the amount of traffic just, just that flows through here. But also in our staff, when we planned this project, we had a very experienced community safety project. So Lindsay, I'm going to ask you to kind of step in here a little bit as well, since you've been around a little longer.
So and I was actually going to turn it over to Kim to kind of talk about, because Kim's in like the day to day operations in the, in the towns in the area. So do you have any? I know we've done a bunch of these community safety enhancements like Hughesville. Maybe we did Point Lookout. We've, we've done a bunch in your district and
Yeah, I mean, from an actual, what we used to call streetscape standpoint.
Correct.
You know, the feedback is good initially, as the councilman mentioned. In time, and I mean way down the road, like sidewalks and the different features that are being built are going to need to be maintained. Sure. And a lot of times that maintenance comes back and they reach out to State Highway and we have to remind them that State Highway doesn't maintain the sidewalk. What's going to look beautiful at the ribbon cutting, right? And then as it gets some age on it, that maintenance of those sidewalks and those features is something that it'll initially come to the district and then we're going to be asking the town, you know, are you able to, to maintain it and make it continue to look as beautiful as it will when we first built it? So some areas where they're maintaining it, it continues to look great. Some areas, frankly, it gets some age to it and then it doesn't look as nice. But overall, from a pedestrian safety standpoint and attracting business and like he said, making it more walkable and things like that, most of the areas where we've done these things, they've been very happy with that.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. And it leads to my final question. You may have tipped your hand already. I know Chuck, obviously leading day to day, being our town manager. What do you see as the biggest risk to accomplishing what we have kind of listed here in our preliminary plan?
The biggest risk in delivering this project, you mean?
Correct. Yep.
I guess I'll lend to Lindsay if she has any thoughts.
I don't know that we have really. I mean, I guess like the biggest risk would be funding not being available, but yeah, I don't, I don't see any risks right now.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Smooth sailing right now.
All right. Well, we'll keep you beholden to that. I joke, but no, thank you very much for answering those questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know as this project, when we're looking down the road, we're always going to be tweaking it. And, and Kim, your team has been very good at looking at the traffic light sequencing. That is going to change, I am sure, once this project has been completed. We may not need all of the lights as we have, you know, briefly discussed before, or the sequencing will be synced on that. So it is, as we always say, a living, a living project that is subject to change and improve as we figure out the little, we work the little kinks out in there. So thank you for that. I'm going to see if Councilman Sampson has any questions or comments.
No questions.
Okay. And Councilman Johnson.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. Just one question, if we can get that link to the project update portal sent to us, please. That'd be great. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Sure. No problem.
All right. And Mr. Stevens, do you have any closing remarks or comments or questions for the great team that is joining us spiritually?
Just, just a reminder, the teaser. So you, you heard reference to a potential MOU coming down the road. That's not right away. That, that will definitely occur during your tenure, your, your time in office. But now you'll know what it is that we're talking about when I come to you and say, we're, we're trying to negotiate an agreement with, with State Highway Administration. It's, it's to, to, to take care of that ongoing maintenance of that potential plaza, those, those additional light fixtures that they may put in, those kinds of things. That, that's what we'll be negotiating down the road. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for Sean, Lindsay and Kim for all that you do for our town and, and presenting this evening.
Sure. No problem. Thank you for having us. If I could ask one question. What are the initial thoughts on the plaza area or pedestrian lighting? Do we think we're leaning towards it? Think it'll kind of help the community or, or do we still have to think about it?
Oh, I'll give my opinion on this one. I love it. And I have already, and I wrote down on my notes with the lighting on, the lighting that you have proposed. I know that the American Legion has been really looking at putting veteran banners out and kind of making our town still have that hometown feeling. And that would be, that would lend it to something of that sort. But in my opinion, I love that. Councilman Gutenberg.
I'm chomping at the bit down here because this weekend we did a walk, a sidewalk survey along the Charles County corridor there, excuse me, the Charles Street corridor with the members, residents and members of the Charles County Strong Towns Group, who's big advocates of, you know, street safety in particular. And we, we stopped in front of the theater and talked about the, the renderings that you provided us leading up to this meeting with that group. And they were, they were thrilled to hear about it too. So I know you've already talked to the, the folks at the Port Tobacco Theater as well. So in, in my experience, that, that rendering is extremely well received.
Councilman, I mean McCormick, any comments down here? Okay.
Yep. I echo everybody else's comments. I'm in support of it. And I think it'd be a improvement.
I think so too.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in support of it. I'm going to assume, I know I heard you say you talked to Port Tobacco Players. I'm assuming we talked to the adjacent side, the liquor store Domino's and the bakery, and they're in alignment also.
Yes, we, we spoke with most of the businesses. We've had difficulty reaching some of them, but we continue to try to reach out to them.
It's a great concept. So that's important.
It is. And Kim, if you have difficulties, you know, reach out to me and I can see if I can reach out to the owners of the business as well, so that we can have their feedback on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Looks great.
No problem. Thank you all. We'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda is matters, matters of council discussion. And we are now, Jamie. Now see there, come on down. We're going to start with the radio station road, Willow Lane Bike Way. We're going to start with the radio station road, Willow Lane Bike Way, and we will go from there.
Good evening. Glad I could be here in person this time. So if you're heading eastbound on Maryland six, when the construction of the streetscape project is done, you will, as a natural driver, having gone slowly through town, want to speed up and head quickly out of town. And hopefully the way that we structured the bike way project, people will not be as inclined to do that because we're also looking at narrowing some lanes, lowering the speed limit, putting in place some features that at least get you out past 488, if not King's Grant to keep traffic, you know, more reasonable all the way throughout. So that's not it. Kelly, do you have my PowerPoint?
Which one?
The one that I sent maybe five o'clock ish.
Okay.
Well, while we're, while we're doing that, I'll try and do this from memory. So there we go. That's it. Thank you. I'm going to give you a little bit of history and then talk about the project and then talk about where we go from there. So 2019, I was the manager for the comprehensive plan that, that is now in effect. Excuse me. And one of the big community focuses was obviously walkability. You wanted to bicycle around town, parks, recreation, and you're set kind of general kind of quality of life issues there. Definitely feeling the pressures of, of growth at the time, but for the folks who are here at that point, really figuring out those kind of neighborhood quality of life issues was, was top priority. And, and again, so in that plan was a, a list of transportation priorities, bicycle, pedestrian priorities. And on that side of the ledger, getting a continuous pathway from downtown out to Laurel Springs Regional Park was, was a very high priority. So we, at the time with my old firm, we reached out to MDOT under their bike ways program, secured a grant to get the preliminary design underway and then have subsequently secured a, a grant for final design and construction. But we've been working at this for a good three and a half, four years now at the actual design process. I was thrilled to hear my colleagues at State Highway say that there are no risks involved in their project. Lower that to be true on mine, but we will, we will get there. So by, let's see, we did have a, we initially were going to Laurel Springs Regional Park. The county wasn't thrilled about kind of going the back way into the park. So we agreed with the county to continue all the way up to Rosewood Road, which makes perfect sense. After a while, the county came on board as a, as a funding partner, project delivery partner. And speaking of MOUs, they're probably another one coming your way in that regard in the next 45, 60 days.
Received the draft of it today, actually. So it, it hasn't made it all the way through the county and I haven't presented it to council yet because it still has to go through our legal review, but we're getting there.
Yep. So that, you know, in the meantime, we are continuing to push through with design. We presented our 100% design plans back to State Highway into the county. July, September ish. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So if you're not familiar with bike lingo, it's, it's interesting. I work on these kinds of projects all across the state and I don't ride a bike. But I'm learning, I've learned the lingo a lot and maybe I'll ride this one. I'll follow behind you, Mayor. All right. You, you go first. So we, there's three parts of this project. One is a cycle track or a protected bike lane, which is some type of a buffered on the street facility. In the case of Willow Lane, where we're talking about here, it will be most likely an eight foot with a two foot buffer and then room for both of the, for buses to go back and forth. A lot of time spent with the school system on that. And then we preserved almost the entirety of the parking on the west side of Willow Lane. I think we may lose a spot or two, but most of those folks have driveways. So that's your protected bike lane or bike, uh, cycle track. The bulk of the project is a shared use path. The, probably the best example, the county's got several, but locally, you might say the AgroCopia, the front of your AgroCopia has a path. Ours is going to be wider. Ours is going to be 10 feet in most places. I think that one is six, but we will have that off street usually buffered by at least six feet. And in some cases, you have eight to 12 feet completely from traffic. And one, two, other than Willow Lane and Charles Street, we have two protected crossings. One is at Audi Lane by the school so that the high school kids can get across into the park. And the other at Box Elder for folks to be able to get into the community park here. So those are the three main types of facilities we have. Next slide, Kelly. So we do start at Summers Middle School, head up Willow Lane, turn east on Charles Street where we're on the north side, running along the cemetery. We do cross over Clark's Run before that, and we replaced that bridge today, which is, feels like it's about three feet wide with a 10 foot, eight foot, eight or 10 foot, I can't remember which, pedestrian bridge so that you can actually get a bike through there. Excuse me. We continue out Charles Street and then start to head north on 488 La Plata Road. One of the requests from our partners at Sage Point is they have a lot of traffic that gets stuck getting in and out of their, their, their main entrance there, one La Plata Road. And we worked with State Highway to be able to create a pocket left turn lane for them to be able to get in and out and some, some devices that'll make it very difficult for people to speed down the shoulder lane and block their entrance as well. So they've been working with us on, on that and we hope to wrap up their piece of it pretty soon. So we continue out 488 again on the west side along Sage Point to, to AgroCopia. AgroCopia has its piece largely in place today. There's a grove of trees there between AgroCopia and the school property that the developer is on the hook for taking down. I spoke to him last week and he's planning to do some of that this fall and get the rest done next spring, which is great. That'll continue his pathway all the way up to the school system property. We then run along the ball fields, along radio station road. We do have the crossing at Box Elder. And then we get to the high school at Abbey Lane and we provide for a crossover there to get people to the park. And then from there, we stay along radio station all the way up until it connects to, to Rosewick. From Rosewick, actually really from, from Willow Lane now to St. Charles and really a little bit farther up into Waldorf, we're going to have about a 10 to 12 mile continuous bike path from La Plata. And to me, that's the real big benefit of, of the project. There's, you know, obviously localized benefits too, but there's, there's a real connectivity opportunity for us, Charles County wide. Next slide. Thank you. I think I've showed these. I must say I screwed up and put the wrong image here. This is Willow Lane. Just ignore this one. It shows no parking. There is parking on Willow Lane. Next slide, please. The alignment again up through AgroCopia and connecting to Rosewood Road. Next slide, Kelly. Just a couple more of the, the cross sections there. We do snake up in front of the Clark Senior Center and the Sage Point property before continuing up to AgroCopia. Next slide. So where do we go from here? So we did have a, a potential disaster with wetlands. So some, if you've been here long enough, you know that there was a time when the county intended to bring radio station road to a boulevard, more or less from Rosewick all the way down to, to 488. For whatever reason, that didn't happen. The county handed us the plans to start to, they had, they had the pathway in there at the time. We took the plans. We started designing. Let's go check out the environmentals, make sure everything's the same. Lo and behold, there are wetlands that have grown about 12, 15 feet out towards the road that were not there. Wetlands. Talking about risks. So we were looking at a two and a half year delay to come up with a mitigation strategy. Luckily, we negotiated with the Department of the Environment and they, last week, was it Chuck, sent us the bill for their, for the, the fee and lieu of having to do a whole separate mitigation project. So we kept this project on track by some creative thinking and working with, with MDE on that. So the, the Board of Commissioners for the county back in February did secure their, did lock in their funding commitment to the project. We are, we did the fee and lieu. We are, we made the final design submission. Our goal is that by May of next year, we will have put a contract on the street and that by September of next year, we will be under construction. That's the goal. There are risks. There's a couple of little pieces of right away. We have to, you know, finish acquiring. We've got to get through the county stormwater process. We're, we're pretty close on that, I believe. We solved the biggest risk. I appreciate your question about risk before because I keep, I keep a risk register and we just like knock them off one at a time, slowly, sometimes slow, sometimes quick. But you've got to manage those and I feel pretty confident that we're going to get to May, June and put a contract on the, on the street and then break ground. Now, the last part. Kelly. The money. So we have now pulled in a number of sources. So we have what we think is about a $3.2 million project. One would not think that a bike way from, for what? Two and a quarter miles would be $3.2 million, but that's the world we live in. We however, have been able to secure about 2 million of that already through state and federal grants. The county is in for at least 420,000, 460,000, maybe even a little bit more. I have to go back and look at the final MOU. At this moment, we think we have about a $600,000 gap. However, typically the state, when they have a transportation alternatives program project, they know that the first cost you give them is always a little bit off. So typically the state will step in and fill some of that gap. The bike ways project only covered, the bike ways grant program only covered the portion from downtown to Laurel Springs Park, did not cover the rest. They've expressed that they would fill in a piece of the gap. So we're going to kind of keep chunking at it piece by piece by piece and, and get you close so that we don't have to dab, tap too far into the town's capital program to, to do much more. We, I think we talked last time that we're going to use a little bit of the safe streets for all money to actually, we're going to pull out some pieces from the bike way and do them as independent projects. So we're, we're kind of coming at it from many angles. What did I miss? I think that's it. I did say to my friends at, at the hospital, I'm working on a project in, in South Carolina. It's called the Swamp Rabbit Trail. It's about a 60 mile project. It's actually known as the Purisma Swamp Rabbit Trail. Purisma is the big health system down there. And I said to my friends at University of Maryland, would it be great as part of their community benefit if this were the Charles Regional Medical Center Radio Station Road Bike Way? They weren't quite there yet, but you know, we'll keep talking. So anyway, that's, so that's the bike way. Happy to take questions to talk about it a little bit more.
Thank you so much, Jamie. And you know, this has been a learning experience for all of us. When MDOT came in and paved Route Six, oh, what, three, four years ago? I just said, why can't you just paint a line and, and put a bike picture right there and call it a bike lane? And I learned that because of the stormwater and that it dips down and it's not for bikes to go through there. I learned a lot about that. I thought it would be as easy as just spray painting a, a picture of a bike on there. So this project has been a long one and it is so encouraging to see how far we have gotten on that. So thank you for your dedication, where I'm sure you could have walked away from this one, but it, you've been taken away many times over. So I'm going to start with Councilman Guttenberg.
One comment, one quick question. So I, I think that, you know, what a great way for the town to receive a benefit where we invest $300,000 and the state and the county is going to basically pay for 85 plus percent of the total project. I mean, you know, so that's the easiest math we're going to get in the next year on this, this council, I'm sure, right? So, and, and, and the way it connects into not only just the local paths that are coming in through some of the developments that are, that are coming in and also the way it connects to the county, I just think is, is really great and I'm looking forward to it. The, the one question I had was, is, you know, we were looking at, I know in the future, we're going to be briefed on some of these paths forward with, with the, the four options that are kind of in there that the town staff is going to have us, you know, a staff report on later. But I was wondering, are, are we, is this project being affected by the federal government shutdown? The way, the way those things are working, adding more cost?
It's not at all. It's the way the program works. Actually, it's a reimbursable program. So you guys have to do the work in order to submit the reimbursement. Federal highway is still operating at 100% capacity at this point. They're funded by advanced appropriations now.
Great.
If we're still here four months from now, maybe
Okay.
we're not here. I don't know.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great question. Go ahead, Councilman McCormick.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Jamie. I really appreciate it. Just echo something nine to one return. Sign me up too. So very, very easy math there. Two questions for you dealing with risk. Okay. So first is looking at this proposal that we had presented here today. It looks like it's going through two school zones right now. I don't think folks are relatively biking early when they're dropping their kids off or seeing their kids go to school. But let's say in the afternoon, have you seen any other projects similar to this where you went through a school zone? And what happened in that area with the actual bikers versus the traffic that was going through?
Sure. So the, the big lesson here is to get as much buffer and separation as is possible.
Okay.
And actually the, on Willow Lane, the issue is more of the bus, school buses than, than pedestrian traffic. So we spent a lot of time with Steve Andricks and others at the school system, working that through and getting them to a point of comfort. You know, the lanes are, it's going to be tight and drivers are going to have to do their job and keep their eye on the road and not smack their mirrors on each other. But that's why they drive school buses and I don't. Nor do I bike. So I'm kind of running out of options here.
I appreciate that breakdown. Again, something to certainly be aware of. It sounds like you already have this in your purview and you're looking at it.
High school, you know, the, the, the median island there with the flashing beacons will provide that comfort. Cause it, it does. It's a little faster than we would like it to be coming south on, on radio station. So we're going to do some things there to try and calm that. And, and hopefully, you know, in, in time, there'll be a full signal there if that road gets extended back to, to Hare, Pine Grove. The HG word.
Sounds good. And then the second question from a risk standpoint, I say cavalier, I don't mean that in a bad way at all. But you sound pretty cavalier with the 600K difference. Really no risk there. This is business as usual. Okay.
I don't want to, that's when, when you said 85% or 90%, you know, can we say 75?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I, I feel good that our, the folks at the state have invested at this, at the planning level, the design level. They've always made the commitment at the construction level. Their own projects are going through, you know, inflationary issues too. This is a set aside pot of money specifically for these kinds of projects.
Correct.
You know, do they put in another 10%, 30%? I can't answer that. They can do 10% administratively before they have to kind of go up to ask, you know, the secretary and the like. And then already had the conversation with the bike ways folks that, you know, they know that they didn't put in, but they weren't asked to put in for the, the northern part at the time because the county hadn't come to the table yet. So they're willing to do that. But yeah, there'll be some gaps still to be, to be managed. There's some residual costs that we're going to have to continue to figure out. But we're just going to keep plugging away at them.
Sure. Thank you, Jamie, very much.
Hey, Councilman Sampson?
Yes, I only had one question and I think you might've already addressed it. From the time that construction actually starts, and I know you can only give an estimate. What is the estimated time of completion? Like, how long would it actually take?
I think we've put either 15, I think we put 15 months is what's going to be in the bid. It will kind of depend, these always depend on when you start, right? If you start, you know, in September and you get to a hard winter, you're kind of stuck, right? If you start in February and get through a full construction season, you're in a lot better position. So I think the, the plus, the over, under ought to be 15 months.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Jamie. Thanks for the presentation. The $600,000 gap. Looking at the capital improvement plan, we listed 25,000 from the fund balance that the 600,000 just pop up as a unplanned source of covering or?
I don't want to get too deep into kind of city budgeting history. I think it's probably fair to say there's been a lot of transition in the way the capital budget has evolved over the past 24 to 30 months. I think 30 months ago, it didn't really have one and lots of people moving around. Some things got added, some things didn't, but we're here, we're stable. We understand what the, the gaps are and we're working towards them. We understand what the, the gaps are and we're working towards them. So I, I don't think that it was. I think it's, it's, it's been a process for the town to come up with a capital program. And I think if you were to look at every project, you'd probably see some. Um, some variation, some quits it takes.
Yeah, no, no. First was a little bit different. There's a huge gap between twenty-five thousand or six hundred thousand dollars from fund balance, but.
Well, no, so, so again, that on the six hundred, the idea is to maximize the federal. Right? We're not going to get six hundred additional federal funds.
Sure.
But two, three, right? Uh, we feel pretty good. We'll get another at least a hundred thousand on the. Bikeways um, uh, grant, which is the state uh, portion of it. Uh, so again, we're going to chunk away at it. Are we going to get it down to? Twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand? No, but we're going to get, you know, I think well past halfway.
And thank, thank you, Jamie. My apologies. I would have said this in advance, but I just, no, while we were talking here. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. And you know, over the weekend, there were probably fifteen cyclists coming down Radio Station Road. Um, so it was pretty neat. It was a beautiful day and uh, they were busy.
Yep.
That's, that will be a huge safety improvement for our town. Um, while we have you here, let's talk about the Will's Memorial Park Amphitheater and Trail.
So council has set this up. Um, you'll recall, and in fact, later this evening, we're going to talk about the facilities master plan. And so the next things that Jamie's going to talk about are, are very much conceptual. Okay? Um, the, the bike path that you just talked about, you saw some hard numbers, you saw commitments from partners. You know, you, you've got a, a potential timeline, right? That's very different conversation than what we're about to transition into. Um, these are informational for you tonight. There's really no decision space here either. Um, but this is really linked to um, a conversation that this council is going to have over the next year and two years. When we get that facilities master plan back and we look at, at all the real property that the town owns and we start to ask council to envision what the future looks like, what? What we want this community to look like. Um, so. These things are really just food for thought. Please don't take this and, and, you know. Talk about it as if it's something that's going to happen. And I saw the drawing because. Um, I don't believe that this drawing has ever been presented to council before. I think it was commissioned um, at the staff level again, at, at a point in, in history. To start sparking uh, some creative thought. And so I think you're the first council to actually see it, but by. But there's absolutely no way that there's, that this, this is a codified plan or that there's been any. Design or engineering that's gone behind it. This is really looking at the land that we own. I think, is that Will's Park that we're looking at? Okay, you know, um. So I, I just leave you with that thought and let Jamie talk about this very conceptually.
Sure. And you should acknowledge that Kelly Phipps has been. Involved and an advocate for it and has some really creative thoughts about what it might look like over time. Um, I was asked to kind of step in and help uh, figure this out where it stood, where it could go. Uh, where it should go about maybe nine months or so ago. But the truth is the history goes back to twenty eleven, I think it is, uh, when the city last had its. Conference of Parks and Recreation Plan, I think is what it was called. And it made the observation that um, the, kind of the west side of town. Didn't really have some of the same uh, park amenities that the east side does with Laurel Springs and um. Box Elder and, and that area. So, you know, fair point. Um, again, that was twenty eleven. Um, a lot has happened since then. The county just to the south, and I didn't include the image. Um. I was on the team for this. The county acquired. How many acres is that? Forty acres? Just maybe not that much. Thirty acres just south of. Uh, Will's Park for La Plata Farm Park. Uh, they did a master plan for that about two years or so ago. It's not really moved forward. It was more just kind of accept the tone of what could be. There was not a lot of work and thinking with the town at the time about. How Will's and La Plata Farm Park could, could, could come together. So I think there's a lot more thinking. Uh, to be done here. The idea at the time was for an amphitheater, some walking trails. Um, uh, here, that's the. Prior town manager, I believe, um, had put out an initial contract to do this as a design build project. Um, we had some initial work. It started in fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. To try and move it forward. We pulled it back and said, let's hang on and figure out what this is really all about and how it fits with everything else. So that's kind of where we are. We're kind of going to be on hold for. A while until the facility master plan uh, comes together. But again, wanted to kind of put it on your, on your radar.
Thank you. And that is a pretty neat concept. I know that uh, that park is underutilized. I think that this would be a really nice enhancement for the town. Um, any questions from council? Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie. So I sit on a parks and rec commission. Um, and I could tell you the. The ladies on there are very, are, are strong advocates for community space in the town. So I know this project is like fourteen years old. It's in the capital improvement plan. It's very conceptual. Uh, you mentioned one thing about, you know, fourteen years ago, I don't think I even was thinking about the town council, but. The equability of open space in the town and this was called out for that particular reason. Um, I know this is conceptual and I think I got the hint of where we're going with it. We have options. There's a lot of money appropriated in the capital plan for this. Um. But I think about Pine Grove is. We got the community park and then they're donating or they're dedicating, excuse me, open space to the town closer to the Rosewood Road area. Um, I'm not sure the timeline of that. Um, but I wonder would be more beneficial to where we think the community is going to go gravitate towards. Just like shift this project, just conversation wise.
Yeah.
And obviously, I think one, Chuck, I would ask that this obviously be a. Whatever the direction is to see what the Parks and Rec Commission uh, weigh in on, um, what that is. But I think about like the, the lab being dedicated and. What would be the use of the amphitheater, which I think we will have some good use of it versus a community center um, in a centralized part of town.
And this, sure, pointing in the right direction. This has really become the town's amphitheater over the past decade or so.
Right, yeah. Um, now this conceptual design don't have anything to do with the playground upgrade.
So I, I forgot to mention that. So there was at the. A little bit of. Mix up here. There was this, what is it? Two eighty or three sixty that was kind of set aside coming out of Arpa.
Three hundred and fifty-four.
Um, but there was a separate appropriation for what was it? A hundred and fifty-ish?
A hundred grand for playground.
For, for playground equipment. And again, we initially said, well, how can we put them together? And try and do this all at once. And then the decision was made, just let's get the playground done. Right? And then let's figure out what to do about um. The rest of the park because they're ultimately, those are going to be separate functions anyway.
All right. Love to hear that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Great. Love a concept, you know, and, and I think when the time does come, uh, Councilman Johnson made a great um. Observation. I think that we should have a joint meeting with the planning, I mean, with the um, Parks and Rec and uh, the council to see the vision to make sure it comes to fruition.
And I would encourage you to just add to that, the La Plata Farm Park concept. They really never got integrated um, two or three years ago when County Record Parks did it.
Wonderful. All right. Next is the Town Hall Campus.
And I would put this one in the same posture. This was a glimmer in somebody's eye at one point. I think the, the history, as I understand it, of this project. Uh, was that when the library started to really gel at the site it was going to be and with. The thinking about the courthouse expansion on the parking lot over there. Uh, that the farmer's market would need a place to go. That the event, the, the amphitheater I mentioned a second ago, um, you know, gets pretty well used at uh, you know, holiday time and, and for other events. Uh, and that the third need was that there was, you know, kind of a lack of parking for community events. Not a thousand percent sure I share that view, but um. Um, that, those were the three kind of issues and ideas presented to me is that as well as the city owning, was it four properties over that way? Um, two, two occup- or two occupied and four total. Oh, two and two. That's what.
Right. You're, you're referring to, yeah, you're referring to the residences right across the street, councilor. So.
So all of those things kind of mixed up into one, started to look at how we could. Kind of program Clean Am or La Grange. Uh, but it literally, I think if, if the town spent. Five or six thousand dollars on starting to think about programming, that was probably a lot. Um, at the time, and it was again, kind of just set aside. You know, let's, we needed to do some thinking about what the, what would happen to the farmer's market because it is a real important institution here. Trying to find another place for it. So, but we didn't get much, much, any farther than this really.
The important thing here though, council is, is just keep this in the back of your mind. We do have that facilities master plan. We identified all of those properties that, that we just referenced and we've asked them to. To identify in, in the course of that study, the highest and best use, understanding that we've got the constraints of the county. Growing out potentially into that parking lot where the farmer's market currently resides. Um, we have this space in this downtown campus area. I'm using air quotes because I think I'm coining that term right as we speak. So. You have this downtown campus area. We own this real estate. So we really needed to think strategically about the public benefit. Why does the town own it? Um, what is its use? How, how are we going to pay it back to the community? And if, and if the answer is, you know, we don't really have a clear plan or there is no public benefit, then, then the town needs to, to have another conversation about what are we doing with these properties? So. We, this is really a, a let's wait and see, but just keep this in the back of your mind that, that we have all of this. And we need to, to think long-term about what is the community need from us in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. And I love the idea of a campus. Um, and this does warrant a further in-depth conversation and especially with our events. How they have been blossoming. Um, and we have a lot of people coming down to our area, the town hall. This, um, I could see a great vision for the future on that. Thank you for that. Um. And uh, I'm sure that we will discuss this further. Um, Municipal Government Works Month. Thank you, Jamie.
Jamie, thanks for coming down.
But maybe, is there any comments?
Oh, we, we can comment. All right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I will. I'll comment on that quick.
Sorry, sorry, Councilman Gutenberg.
Yeah, nothing too in-depth, right? But um, you know, I, I think it is uh, good and healthy to explore, right? Um, um, designs like that, you know, a community to have those kinds of conversations. Um, uh, you know, and looking at it in that frame, um, those would be, you know, town assets for as amenities when we talk about amenities as assets. Um, but, but I, sometimes when you see designs, there's elements of it. There's really great elements there. I think there's also sometimes when you see something, it also helps you understand what you don't want, right? And so without picking on anything in general there, but, but, but I also want to just. For the, for the, the council, just kind of reserve this kind of thinking in your head. Those properties are, um, if, if we develop them as uh, town amenities, they budgetarily speaking, they will be a liability to us. Um, the, um, I know it has not been active, but the um, uh, the La Plata Town Center Corporation in the past. Um, has done a lot of work and, and, and the town has done a lot of work over the years. Um, going all the way back to two thousand and one, but as, but as late as just twenty sixteen, they had a. A technical assistance panel report that was done. That's really interesting. And one of the things that they. Had recommended is, is that there, if there were consolidated blocks of properties made available. That the town should meet with folks that could develop that into um, something that benefits the town. Um, and, and if we were to do something like that. You can, you know, we have talked about a, a land value uh, revenue uh, study that we're looking at, right? And so if you look at. You know, what those houses today don't generate any. Uh, any, any revenue really for the town from it, from a, from a property tax standpoint. Um, but if those were to be redeveloped in the way that the, the rest of the, the downtown is in, which our downtown is. Um, two-story multi-use, right? It is, uh, their commercial and residences mixed all throughout. Um, and the, and I suspect when we see that, that, uh, that study come back, that that is per square foot, that is probably some of the most. Um, revenue generating uh, property in the town, probably more so than um, than even over where our big and um, uh, retailers are along three oh one. Um, because they're much more dense. And so, you know, I, I think we should, you know, revisit some of the work that's been done by past councils and the downtown redevelopment corporation to consider. You know. Not just amenities, but what? What, how could that be developed downtown to, to, to achieve some of those goals is all, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, um.
That's okay. No, no, it's okay.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson, for calling me out on that. I appreciate that. Uh, any other um, comments? All right. Now going on to Municipal Government Works Month, and that was well worth it, Councilman Gutenberg. That's your comment. So thank you for that. All right, Mr. Stevens.
Counsel, Chuck Stevens, your town manager. Um, this really is a preview. So this is just a teaser for a proclamation that staff's going to bring to you at your November eighteenth meeting. So Municipal Government Works Month is November. Um, today is October twenty eighth. We didn't want to get two thirds of the way through the month. Before we brought you a proclamation to recognize the work of the town employees because that's really what this proclamation is going to be all about. So tonight, there's no action for you. Again, this is another, um, put this on your radar. But we wanted to make sure that we recognize the employees of the town for the entirety of the month of November and not just pick it up on the eighteenth. When we're going to bring you that proclamation. So that's, that's what we're doing here today. Um, and, and you can read your agenda packet and then it talks about the alignment with the strategic plan and, and all of that. But the bottom line is this is an opportunity. For us to recognize uh, and generate interest in the work that local governments do and the value of local governments. And this year, we want to really focus on the employees. And that's the guidance coming out of the uh, the Maryland Municipal League is we really want to focus on the employees. And so we're doing just that. So again, this agenda item is purely informational. You're going to see a proclamation on your November eighteenth meeting. But from November first through the end of the month, we want to pause and recognize the great work of the town and specifically the employees. That's all I have for you pending your questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments? All right, good. So that brings us to new business and I'm going to put it right back to you, Mr. Stevens, for your town manager report.
All right. I, I have just one thing I want to bring to your attention this evening, council. Um, I want to inform you about a new administrative procedure that we're going to be implementing in our utility billing department here shortly. Um, once we figure out all the, all the procedural details. And that has, this has to do with addressing uh, recurring equity issue with our water customers. So currently, when a resident experiences a water line break or a leak that discharges the water to the ground. Okay, um, think of a, a, an underground service line break. Um, the town is charging them for the treated water that passes through the meter, of course, and we are never going to subsidize that. If we're treating the water and distributing it, you're always going to pay what passes through your meter. Okay, but we're also charging them the wastewater or sewage fees on that water when in fact, the town's not actually treating that water because it's going to the ground. And we know that it's going to ground and we can quantify that amount. So that doesn't seem to be um, what we should be doing. And so we're going to enact a procedure to address that. So we're going to start a standard operating procedure that's going to allow staff to provide limited relief. Again, from the wastewater, the sewer fees only when the leak is verifiable. We've confirmed that it's been repaired and paid for by the, by the owner. Um, and that we can establish that it clearly did not discharge into the wastewater system. Okay? And we're probably looking at also putting some constraints around that wherein residents can only request relief once in a three-year period, for example. Um, so they're going to have to establish that it was a leak. We're going to have to verify that. It was repaired. We have to establish that it went to ground, not into the wastewater system. And then probably you get one opportunity for relief in a, in a defined time period. Those are some of the details that we're working out um, right now. I don't believe that this is going to have an impact on the budget because when we budget revenues, we don't anticipate broken pipes. And so we don't anticipate revenue on. Leaks that are anomalous events that we can't uh, anticipate. So um, that's, it's an operational procedure, as I said. I just wanted council to be aware of it in case you hear about it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for that too, because it is a hardship for those that um, they're not planning for a pipe to break. And then they get that water bill that the sewer is, you know, three times what the water is. So thank you for looking at that and briefing us on that. I look forward to. Once you work out all of the little details hearing about that. Do you have any comments?
Uh, I've experienced that myself. I've had, I've had a water break at my house where uh, we, we, we had a, a pipe that broke and, and for hours and hours and hours, it was going in our guest house and uh. Yeah, we had to have that repaired. Ultimately, our insurance company paid that very large water bill. So yeah, I can, I can understand and relate to how that happens and how that goes. Yeah. So I think that's a good feature to be able to do.
Yes, uh, I want to say thank you, Mr. Stevens, for this. While by definition reactionary in nature, I think this is a proactive action that you. Uh, are taking in your capacity as town manager. And again, I know I've sent you at least four or five emails directly from residents. I'm sure you've gotten. Hundreds of other ones or at least dozens of other ones from the rest of the council. And I think this is the right course of action it takes. So thank you for briefing us on it. And I look forward again to seeing. How do you define the right and let left and, you know, what does that three-year plan, five-year plan look like? But uh, but again, thank you for taking these actions.
I would just like to say, uh, thank you for looking at this. I think that will uh. Benefit and uh, please the residents of the town.
Based on. That's all I have, council. Thank you.
All right. All right. Councilman Gutenberg, do you have a report for this evening?
Yes, it'll be quick because I really kind of already said it when I got the opportunity to talk about the walk we took this weekend with the Charles County Strong Towns Group, doing the sidewalk and street safety kind of survey. So they're an interesting group who really, if you want to get involved in local things, they're a fun group to do that with, and they're very oriented at looking at how policies and codes work different places and how they can be applied here. And they get out and do real stuff, you know, walking around. La Plata was one of them. They do it all around the county. They're very active. So, you know, I strongly encourage anybody that's looking for a way to talk to like-minded people and get involved a little bit, that's a good way to do it. And we really enjoyed our time with them out there today or out there earlier this week. And we ran into a lot of people out doing the small-town trick-or-treating, right? So we were intermingled with all of them. We stopped over by the firehouse, looked at the garden over there. We stopped by the train station. Volunteers were working over there. So it was a really active day on Saturday in downtown La Plata. It was a lot of fun. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman McCormick?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Officer Kruger. Really excited to have him on board. Comes with a lot of experiences. Chief Norris explained to us from Florida. His wife is actually in the Air Force serving her nation as well. So you've got a dual-service family coming to La Plata and definitely a big addition to our police force there. So really excited to have seen that happen today. Excited to have him on the road keeping us safe. I want to say thank you to Chief Norris, who's still here in the back, for reaffirming your oath of office and becoming the chief. I was talking to Chief Schinner right before the meeting today, and he shared that our last couple of chiefs have come from external hires, meaning from outside of La Plata. And to see somebody coming through the ranks, working through, already having that organic build within the community and being promoted to such an important position for our town is just excellent to see. So Chief Norris, I look forward to your tenure. You've got a lot of big shoes to fill, so I'm excited to see how you continue some of the programs that have started and what you bring to the table that's different and leads La Plata to be in a safer place. And that leads to the final three things I have here. So first, very similar to how Ms. Minor and Mr. Stevens introduced the, you know, hey, we want to recognize the folks in town that work here in Town Hall to provide exceptional services to our residents. We will not be able to meet until after November 11th, which is, of course, Veterans Day. So Mayor James read the proclamation, or maybe Councilman Gutenberg, I don't remember, read the proclamation for Operation Green Light. So I got my green tie on because he won't see me until after that week. But I really hope everybody does put up a green light and really remember the sacrifices that a lot of folks have made that unfortunately are no longer here with us today or are here with us today and currently serving. And again, we have several veterans here. Councilman Gutenberg, who served in the Air Force, myself, who served in the Army, Madam Mayor, who is a spouse of, you know, a military veteran, Councilman Sampson, who of course served, and then Mr. Stevens, our town manager, who served as well. So a lot of service here. I want to say thank you. We recognize you. And again, really important stuff to remember. And then finally, a couple of unfortunate things that are happening right now that we do need to be aware of as we get into budgeting season, and what does our policies look like as a town council? So we still have a federal government shutdown right now. And as many of you are probably aware, we had a major tech cut in jobs today. So several companies had upwards of twenty thousand jobs cut, and it's important for us to recognize it here in La Plata because HQ2 from Amazon is located right in Crystal City. So we have folks in La Plata and certainly Charles County that work there and may have been impacted by a layoff today. We have several Microsoft offices as well, and obviously Nova, Northern Virginia area, is the number one area for where it comes to housing these data centers, which AWS was impacted today with cuts. Microsoft, all these different e-commerce businesses as well. So we've got folks in the federal government that may be going without a paycheck here, you know, in the near future, if not already. We've got folks in the private sector now being impacted as well. So I really hope we take a moment to reflect and figure out a way, how can we best serve our community as they go through some of these tough times, especially with Thanksgiving, Christmas, and the holiday season right around the corner. So I do want to call that out and ensure that you are definitely in our thoughts, you know, and we'll be working for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Sampson. Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I also attended the Strong Town Community Walk on Saturday, which was great. We got our steps in that day. And a special shout-out to Lucinda. This year, events have been truly amazing and really engaging. Saturday, the Trick or Treat Trail was great, and we was only out there for about an hour, if that. And the amount of people that came out to participate was really great. And of course, thank you to all the business community and partners, the police department, crime solvers, that also handed out candy. It was a great day, and the weather was beautiful. I lost my last rate of thought, so thank you.
Well, if you remember, you can interrupt me. So it was, since we met last week, it's only been a week, I felt like I'd lived a lifetime. I've been very busy for the, on behalf of the town. I am the elected official representative for the Southern Municipal Conference, and this time it was held in Virginia Beach. They're coming to Maryland in the spring, so we're excited about that. This conference is fantastic. It is all of the municipal leagues from Massachusetts down to Florida, out to Oklahoma, and there are elected officials that attend. And it is, we're bouncing ideas off of each other. And when Marilyn gets up there and talks about certain things, they're like, okay, they feel a little bit better about themselves because they see the struggles that we have, especially right now with our budget. But one of the things, there's two takeaways that I had from this last meeting or a couple days ago, is one, that they have, most of the municipalities have an anti-harassment policy for elected officials. So I thought that was interesting. And then there's a mandatory municipal training for elected officials in many of the jurisdictions. So these are things that maybe when we are doing our code of conduct and our rules of procedure, that we can look to see if this is a good fit for us as well. As my colleagues have said, we had a fabulous Saturday with the Trick or Treat Trail, and Lucinda did that and the police were out there. There were families everywhere. I received several texts from the businesses thanking the town for putting this on, and it was really nice. And then we showed up, my husband and I showed up in costume to wrap up the evening to see Ghostbusters Frozen Empire. And we were a little frozen. It was a little cold, but the popcorn was flowing and the people were in costumes, and it was really a neat event. Our next event is going to be Salute to the Veterans Parade, which is on Sunday, November ninth at 1:00 p.m. We usually have about fifteen hundred people participate in that, and I understand that there may be some additions. I'm not going to put it out there yet, so you're going to have to come out to the parade and just honor our veterans. We have, today is National First Responder Day, so thank you, Chief Norris, to you and your officers there for keeping us safe and for the EMS, the fire, the military is also in there. And anyone else that's the first responders, their first line of defense, our first line of defense, they're running into danger and protecting us. So thank you very much. You deserve so much more than just one day. And coming up, I got a phone call today from one of the on-air personalities for WGTS. They're coming to La Plata next week, and what they're trying to do is a food drive, a food drive for those that are federal employees or those that right now are struggling a little bit. So I thought that was very exciting that they let me know that they're coming in. I think it's going to be on Tuesday. They were finalizing their details of where they were going to go. And then I know that on Thursday, I will be down at Pick-a-Wax and for Career Day, and I think Lieutenant Posey will be down there representing our police officers. And it's a day from 7:00 a.m. till noon where we get to tell the students, and we will have about three hundred students filter through throughout the day about our jobs and careers. So that's always an exciting time. I think I've done this for the last six times, six years. So that will be a fun day, and they're always very surprised at some of the things that they learn, from everything, from farmers to police officers to, I am sharing my time with a hairdresser this time. So this will be really interesting to see how she owns her own business. Our next council meeting is on November 18th, Tuesday, November 18th, and Happy Veterans Day to everyone who has served or is serving. And with that, did you remember what you needed to?
I have none.
Okay, well, there we go. I gave, I mean, I was going as long as I could. We have a reason to go into closed session this evening, and I will entertain a motion from council to make a motion to go into closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion to go into closed session for statutory authorities, three dash three oh five B one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignments, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance, evaluation of appointee employee or official who has jurisdiction over, the topic being conduct of a member of a board or commission. Reason for closure, consideration of disciplinary action. And then the second reason would be section three dash three oh five B fourteen, to discuss before a contract is awarded or bids are opened, a matter directly related to negotiating strategies or the contents of a bid or proposal, if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in competitive, in the competitive bidding or proposal process, the topic being the facilities master plan contract discussion, and the reason for closure is discuss negotiating parameters.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Madam Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call? If you are in favor of going into closed session for the said reasons, please indicate by saying aye, if not, nay.
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?[1791.66]